And get started back. Uh, next on the agenda is our public hearing. Uh, public hearing, I'm going to go ahead and read the public comment guidelines quickly. For anyone that needs to hear those, public comment offers citizens the opportunity to address the board either in person or in writing on matters relevant to the responsibilities of the board to maintain respectful and constructive environment. Please adhere to the following guidelines addressing the board. Please direct all comments to the board as a whole, refraining from addressing individual board members or employees of the board or county. Respectful conduct, personal attacks as well as the use of insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Scope of topics. Comments should pertain to issues within the purview of the board and local government. Topics beyond the board's control or unrelated to local governance's are not appropriate to public comment. Question and answer, public comment is not a question and answer session. Board members will not respond to questions during the public comment without permission from the chair. Enforcement, the chair may rule the speaker out of order for violating these rules. Upon a second violation, the speaker may be removed from the podium. Eligibility, only residents of Patrick County or property owners in Patrick County are eligible to address the board during the public comment period. Time limit, each speaker will be allocated six minutes for their comments. However, if multiple citizens wish to address the board on the same issue, they may appoint a spokesperson to speak for up to 10 minutes, providing they forfeit their individual speaking slots. Chair's authority, the chair has the authority to manage the time allocated for public comment, including limiting the number of speakers, shortening speaking times, or waiving any public comment provisions as needed necessary. Sign up procedure, a sign up sheet will be available on the podium for citizens to register to speak. Speakers will be called in the order of sign up and additional speakers may be accommodated if time permits. Submission of comments, speakers may provide comment, copies of their comments to the clerk for inclusion in the meeting minutes. Thank you for your cooperation in maintaining a respectful and productive public comment session. Our first public input is on the revision of the solar facilities. I have the resolution here. If it's okay with the board, I'm going to skip down to the actual changes and just read that part. Does that suit the board? Okay. So I'm on the second page, line 33 is where I'll start for anybody who's looking. By deleting and/or repealing the amendment to chapter 11, land use of the Patrick County Comprehensive Plan for Solar Facilities as adopted by the Board of Supervisors on June 12th, 2023. Down to line 37, part two, by adopting the following amendments to the Patrick County Comprehensive Plan to be inserted following the section titled Forestry and preceding the section titled Land Use Summary. Line 41, utility scale solar facilities, while Patrick County does not currently have any anti, any utility scale solar facilities, recent interest in proposed projects have necessitated the county to reconsider the appropriateness of this land use. Utility scale solar facilities can have a significant impact on the landscape, wet land, soil, view sheds, and other natural and cultural resources located within the county and are generally incompatible with the rural character and land uses traditionally found within the county. Further, such facilities do not directly contribute to the local economy or provide jobs for the community over the long term based upon potential impacts, land using compatibility, and negligible benefits. Utility scale solar facilities are not considered to be an appropriate land use in the county and should therefore be prohibited with the location, character, and extent of the proposed facilities being deemed not substantially in accord with this comprehensive plan. This policy is not applicable to facilities of and utility scale solar facilities. For instance, accessory solar facilities associated with agriculture, residential, commercial, or industrial where our great, I'm sorry, or industrial use where generated electricity is principally utilized onsite and/or net metered to off-site electricity use. Part three, by amending the section titled Land Use Summary to add the following bullet to the, to follow the last bullet. Utility scale solar facilities are not considered to be an appropriate land use in the county and proposed facilities shall be deemed as not being substantially in accordance with the comprehensive plan with respect to review under 15.2-2232, the code of Virginia. I will fish, I will open the public hearing. I had no one sign up for that. Anyone? With no one, then I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion to adopt the amendments of the comprehensive plan.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Overby?
Ah.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Darrell. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, under public hearing, we have the public hearing will be held by the Board of Supervisors. Uh, hearing is held here. Basically, this is our budget hearing, also asking about tax levies as well. Uh, we had several people sign up for that. Um, I will open that public hearing at this point. Uh, I will go through the people that signed up to speak and the order that they signed up. So we will start with Jane Fulk from the Dan River District.
I'm not in favor of raising taxes to balance a budget. It looks like we have a problem with spending more than we have with revenue. If I don't have the revenue to come into my house, I can't spend the money. And that looks like what we have. Also, it looks like we don't have a money problem. Uh, but unrestricted funds went up $4 million from January to February. Our personal property, uh, if we propose a way to go up, I don't like the way that Mr. Marshall proposed it because that takes away the right of the citizens to have any say for the next two years and beyond. 28% of the population in Patrick County is over 65. 10% of those people are below poverty level. 23% of the children in Patrick County live below the poverty level. We need to look at taxes because that seems to be all we can think about to bring in money here. Raising the TOT not only affects Primland, which I know is a big supporter of the TOT, but it also affects the small cabin rentals, RB&Bs, and others who only have small places. I have talked to some of those small places and they'll either have to go up on their price or possibly just close down and will lose that revenue period. Uh, nothing has been said about the half a million in raises for county employees and that comes after a million in raises last year and some of the same people are getting the big raises. When I worked here, we were sent out a letter each year that told us to cut our budget a certain percent. Sometimes that was hard, sometimes it was easier, depending on the percent we had to cut. I also did not receive a raise every year that I worked here and I worked for the county 35 years. If we didn't have the money, nobody got a raise. If we had just a little money, we got the cost of living raise. And if there was more money, we got a larger raise. Those are all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Kurt Bosenmeyer from Smith River District.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Bosenmeyer. I'm from the Smith River District and I would like to address the board regarding implementation of taxes that inhibit growth. At the last meeting, the budget shortfall had been reduced to less than $200,000 and the supervisors seemed to be in accordance with taking this amount from the undesignated reserve funds. Where they disagreed, however, was on the means to replenish the successive reserve piggy bank. One supervisor advanced a reasonable approach, increased the personal property tax rate not to exceed the average employed by surrounding counties and spread this increase over three years. As this supervisor explained, this would mainly apply to those county residents with high-value vehicles or other pricey toys and it would take the place of a real estate tax hike. Another supervisor, fearing a similar increase in the machine and tool tax, stated that we should focus on bringing in more business to the county and use tax revenue from the new businesses to ease the budget crunch. Two other supervisors felt that we should increase revenue by increasing the transient occupancy tax, one offering his opinion that this would not impact county residents. He obviously did not seek the opinion of the Patrick County Lodging Association or he failed to remember that the pervasive theme of the recent tourism summit was that we urgently need a hotel to serve as partner in obtaining tourism grant funds. Oh, I guess that, that supervisor did not attend the tourism summit or follow up on its results. Other proposals included increasing the meals tax, et cetera. The budget shortfall isn't caused by tourists or visitors to this county, so it is somewhat disingenuous to attempt to cash in on revenue from sources that may be discouraged from visiting Patrick County because of the high taxes. We don't see a lot of hotel operators lined up to open hotels here now and that situation won't be improved by raising the transient occupancy tax rate. I'm glad to see that the legislature has kept the TOT rate at 7%. It started out at 5%. Otherwise, I could see our Board of Supervisors raising the rate to 10%, 15% or more. Think about what would happen if Primland elected to go out of the hospitality business and just sell off their property. Half a million dollars of TOT revenue out the window. Please consider other options. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Malcolm Roach from Smith River District.
Hi, I'm Malcolm Roach from the Smith River District. Before I start, when I use the word administration while I'm speaking, I'm not speaking to you personally. I'm speaking to everybody, okay? I want to talk about the budget. Everyone seems to have their own little project that peeves them and a part of the budget that should be cut. I sat here and listened for the past few weeks and heard some good ideas. The board should look into them. For a county of 15,000 people to carry close to a $36 million debt is outrageous. The 2.4 million proposed before starting should have been tossed in the trash. This is like jacking up the price of a car. It was $20,000 to $30,000 and then a week later trying to say it's on sale for $25,000. It's basically propaganda. We need to hold the budget that we have now and we need to cut that by 10%. Then we might be making some progress. The administration uses other counties and what they do as an excuse to put more debt. The question is, why do we want to be like other counties? Why do we have to be followers instead of leaders? Why don't we want to be the shining star county in Virginia that other counties point to and say, we want to be like Patrick County. Look at them. They're under control. They don't have a debt problem. My grandfather used to say to me when I wanted something, if your friends jumped off a cliff, would you jump off the cliff with them? And it's an old adage, but it's true to this day because all the counties around us carry debt and the state carries debt. Do we have to? The other day, I was down at Clayton's son-in-law's place paying my bill. I looked through the window and I saw his children down there playing with a wrench and I thought, wow, there's the nest, next grease monkeys we're going to have here in Patrick County. But then I also thought is, do we have the right to put them in debt? Do we have the right to spend their money before they're even old enough to make a decision? I believe we have a moral responsibility to the people that are coming up and I think we're failing. Why would a young person grow up here, find out that they're in debt and they're going to have to pay our bills because we can't control our spending? It's not right. It's not fair. Right? So I believe we have an obligation before God to do what's right. You guys have the ability and the opportunity to fix this. And I'm going to ask you to fix it just simply because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Crystal Harris from Smith River District.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'd, I'd just like to take a moment and caution each and every one of you about raising personal and the lodging tax. I was on the board when both of these were started. We worked long and hard to get it. Don't, don't make you, what that money can bring in to what you can get. Work with it because especially on the personal tax. We on the board had an extra hole when we left here, when we passed it, had to walk funny for a while. So I'm just encouraging you to please be careful before you start raising things on, on the people that has lived here for so long. And I do have toys in my garage. My husband does. And I, I have a 10-year-old car that we play on, but we do pay a lot of the taxes. And I just encourage you to please, please be careful before you start doing that. And we do, we did have 34 cabins we rented. He sold most of them, but that, you know, whether it affects it or not, I don't know. But again, I just asked you to please be careful before you start going too high on any tax that you bring in now. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we have Valerie Lloyd, is that right? From Blue Ridge.
Good evening. I'm Valerie Lloyd from the Blue Ridge District. I'm here to bring up some stuff on the budget matters. I'm not sure about, um, the, um, people that do the, uh, interviews and stuff for people that are hired through the county. I don't know if the Board of Supervisors has any management skills to hire or to look and see, um, pay raise, or excuse me, um, pays for people that they're hiring, but we do have some people in this county that is being overpaid. Okay? It doesn't take long to look it up on a computer. I've been on the computer all week. Not only that, the county administrator voiced her frustration in January over people being upset about her pay. I don't, I don't blame her. I would have took the pay myself. With no more experience than she had, she, she was offered a gold mine and she still has a gold mine. But what really gets us is that not only she gets the salary that she gets, but she also gets an assistant under her. That's costing us tax dollars. That's our money. The median household salary, there, the county administrator should be based on the following, the education, experience, communication skills with the employees and in the public, population of the county, the median household salaries. You should only be based the salary joining counties. You should not. And every county is unique in their own way. The overpaid county administrator received a blessing from the VOS, which is the Board of Supervisors at the time, to hire her assistant, which greatly increased our budget. We have several things here we can look at. Okay? We have a lot of vehicles that this county pays for. Okay? Why can't we get rid of some of those? The jobs that I've ever had never gave me a vehicle to get back and forth to work with. I had to use my own. Okay? The county citizens pay their own vehicles, their own taxes, their own insurance. If you could eliminate some of these perks with cars, buying the cars or giving them so much percentage to drive to work, which is expected of them anyway if they wanted a job, do you know how much money we would save? We would save a pile of money. The county taxpayers shouldn't have to continually pay for bad decisions. Our local govern, that our local government makes while they feel entitled to give themselves raises. The raises that are in the packet this year, that, that's, that, that should not happen. And our property taxes, personal property taxes should not have to go up because of the local government's negligence. We shouldn't have to pay for people that don't know what they're doing in their job. On another note, we have people on fixed income, retirees basically making it right now. They're doing payday loans just to buy groceries to put on their, to put on their tables for their kids. We are a population of the most, 17,000 people. We should not have all the revenue that we've gotten. And it's really up to the Board of Supervisors and the county administrator since we make all this money to figure out how to get us out of this debt. That's, that's all of, that's all of y'all's jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Janet Rohr from Mayo River District.
Good evening. My name is Janet Rohr and I'm from Mayo River District. I do have concern about the personal property tax rate. Uh, the machinery tools you're looking at are $1.71 and the personal property, $1.70, 87 cents. Machinery and tools tax is not your average business tax. It is only in manufacturing what takes the raw product and makes it into something else. The business personal property tax is the most businesses are in that. That's going to be like your repairs, your, your loan service, your excavating service. Most of the businesses are going to be under the personal property business tax, not the machinery and tools tax. An example, if a business over here has machinery and tools tax at 125,000 is their value, at the 1.71, their tax will be $2,137. If you have your business personal property tax at the 125,000 value at $1.87 would be $2,337, 200 more dollars. You got two businesses, one's falling under machinery and tools and the other one's falling under business personal property tax. If you continue to raise that rate, like there was discussion in the last meeting, in three years, if you get it up to $220, $2.20 per 100 and you have that machinery and tools tax over here at 125,000, their tax is going to be $2,137. But this business personal property tax over here at $2.20 for 125,000 is going to be $2,750 or 612 dollars more than the other. By law, you can, you don't have, those two rates don't have to be the same. Machinery and tools is a separate tax, taxation. But just keep in mind, you're throwing your businesses out of whack. You know, small businesses are struggling anyway, so when you raise that personal property tax, you're raising it on the majority of your businesses. And that's pretty much what I had to say. I know that it is hard to have revenue to come into the county and you're looking at all kinds of sources. I know the reassessment has been mentioned. The county has reassessments every six years and one reason they have such long period of time is because the cost of it. It's been talked about in-house assessments for the cost of it. When you have a reassessment, it's not necessarily going to bring you in a whole bunch of money at one time. By code, you can only increase it 1%. So after that reassessment, by the code 58.13321, you can only go 101% over what the previous tax was. Now, the board has the authority to raise that tax rate, but you'll be raising a tax rate. But don't think in, when we get to reassessments, you're going to get a whole lot of income from the reassessment. You know, reassessment, the purpose of a reassessment is to revalue the land at fair market value as the best you can. Other than that, you know, y'all put in like meals tax and transit occupancy tax and sales tax was raised, so there's just not a lot of options there to bring in more revenue. But, you know, this, this personal property to raise it up, especially to keep raising it up, you're going to hurt your taxpayers, but you're going to really hurt your businesses too. And they, a lot of those businesses are struggling. We're thankful for all of them. And I do thank you for not raising the real estate taxes because that's a big thing too. I got my bill the other day and it's $3,200. So if you raise my personal property, so I'll pay more personal property and then I'll have to pay my second half of my real estate bill. So I thank you for your time and appreciate what y'all do.
Next, we have Lee Ann Sealy from the Smith River District.
Good evening. My name is Lee Ann Sealy from the Smith River District and I thank you for this time to speak. The proposed personal property tax in three years will be 28% increase. Though some supervisors feel this is not a big deal, it is to a county where 15% of children and nearly 20% of seniors live below the poverty line. As in a rural county, mass transit is unavailable. Having a reliable car for getting groceries, medical care, errands, large and small, is mandatory. Cars do not last forever and wear and tear because of mountain terrain shorten their life even more. Just using a car as an example, the average price national statistics of even a used car is about $27,000 today with inflation on vehicles. It's about 1% a year. That places the cost at about $30,000 for used cars in three years. With this tax increase, citizens will be at a $600 a year as opposed to $351 with the $1.71 tax base. The average price of a new car is around $48,000. This increased tax will cost the owner $1,000. This may, uh, sound like a drop in the bucket to some board members, but to those who are on fixed incomes and taxpayers of this county, this is devastating. To put this hardship in perspective, Loudoun County, Virginia is the richest county in the country and not just the state. Loudoun household income is four times more than this county, yet Patrick County, one of the poorest counties in the state, is expected to pay almost half the amount of the wealthiest county in the country in personal property tax. The scale of this discrepancy is alarming, unrealistic, and crippling the taxpayers. Yet, not only do certain board members still refuse to face the facts, they're turning their backs on the struggling families of this county. To add insult to injury, board members have made comments, people who live on fixed incomes don't drive $80,000 vehicles. This balances out. Is the implication stay poor and you'll probably be okay? Patrick County does not promote prosperity. We punish it. The Patrick County sign greeting people enjoy the simple life, maybe change to enjoy being simply poor. And as the taxpayers fund excessive administrative salaries, some of whom drive tax-funded vehicles, will this be of any consequence to them or will the taxpayer once again be picking up the tab? You work your whole life to have a few extra dollars to enjoy life, but with the way this county is run, we either have to go back to work to pay these additional taxes or live like a pauper. God forbid if you can scrape up enough to buy a reliable car. I wonder why we are where we are. I wonder why we are where we are, why we're in so much debt. I've been scrolling through the budgets. I've been on the website. I'm speechless. We need a seven-year forensic audit. This county needs to be audited to report on the effectiveness and efficiency of the county's control environment. It has been stated that in order for the county to prosper, we need to grow government. The only ones prospering are those in the government. There are additional positions added and payroll expanded. And looking ahead at the proposed 2026 budget, general fund and salaries is just plain frightening. This county isn't growing, just the county payroll is. And I guess you know I'm against this increase.
Up next, we have Galen Gilbert from Peters Creek District.
Good afternoon. There's been a lot of good speeches up here and it's sort of hard to follow in here, so I don't have too much to say, but this tax increase is ridiculous. 16 cents for the next three years. That's going to put your personal property tax over $2.20 some cent. I don't have, as I call them, nice toys. I just got rid of a 20-year-old Tahoe and now I have a 10-year-old Yukon. But with the value of the cars the way they are now, y'all are about going to tax me out of that vehicle. And my home is a mobile home. I'm proud of living in my mobile home. I'm very happy in my mobile home. But it's also taxed under personal property. And where's it going to stop? I understand they need revenue, but there's also going to have to be tightening of some belts around here because we can't keep going in the direction we're going. And I don't know when the last time I've seen a new business, I mean actual big manufacturing business in this county, I don't know when the last one I've seen. I've seen a lot of them leave back in the 80s when they done the NAFTA deals and all the textiles left and there went four of our biggest plants that supplied employment for probably over a third, if not over a half of this county. And thank God, we're going to get this hospital back. And I love the name of the place, Stewart Community Hospital. It fits here perfectly. It was, I think, sort of the name of the hospital before they built R.J. Reynolds. And that's going to help some of this EMS problem that you'll go from running four hours, three to four hours on a call to an hour and a half, maybe even 45 minutes. So that's going to help some of this EMS problem that we have and relieve a little bit of that pressure of burning our trucks up going to Martinsville or to Mount Airy or even Baptist or Roanoke. We have taken them into places. And I hate to see it be put on the backs of our fire and rescue. People say, well, we're going to give this money to them. And that's been tried before. It didn't happen. And I just hate to see us be the scapegoat of this situation. So I know it's a lot of hard work. Y'all got a hard job in front of you, but some things have got to be cut and a few things may have to go. And I hope we can get to a good medium on some stuff. Thank y'all very much.
Up next, we have Al Biella from Peters Creek. Is that close to correct?
That was pretty darn close.
Okay. I tried, I promise.
No, you're good. Okay. My name's Al Biella. So you're real close. And yeah, we live in Peters Creek District. And I'm relatively new here, just been here a couple of years. And I really appreciate all the involvement and articulate thoughtful comments from people here. I'm very impressed and very happy to see it. Thank you all for that. And we started out talking about emergency services and safety and we end up here talking about budget and taxes. And I have a very specific concern and question, and it really applies to all the stuff that's been talked about in a very specific way. So it's been suggested to me that there's work being done on some kind of a event ordinance for Patrick County. And my concern about that, it involves safety and it also involves making sure that all of the transient occupancy tax that should be being collected is being collected. So I'm new and there's a lot for me to learn and there's a lot that I don't know. But if there's a event going on where 600 or more tickets are being sold every year to an event and the Patrick County emergency services phone numbers are all published for this event because that's how they're handling their emergencies, then that's putting pressure on the county. And that's a four-day event that's taking place over Memorial Day weekend where I presume there's a lot of other stuff going on too. And I don't even know how much awareness there is at various parts of the county about just exactly what that's all about and if there is transient occupancy tax that's supposed to be being collected. And so I'm just really curious what's going on with that event ordinance, if there is one going to be in place. I know that the event that I'm aware of, and I don't know who is and isn't aware of the event, is mostly people not from the area. It's so, there's, and it doesn't look to me like they're spending their money in the county too much outside of being at the event that they're at. So that's pretty much what I'm wanting to bring up, wanting to ask about and just wanting to know, you know, how that fits in. Because I figure, y'all don't know where the things that you're paying money for like emergency services, where they're being tapped and where they're being leaned on at particular times in the year. And then you want to know that if there's transient occupancy tax that should be being collected, that it is getting collected. So that's pretty much all I got. Like I say, I'm new, I plead ignorance, there's a lot for me to learn here. But I really appreciate everyone who's spending their time and energy at this meeting and thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Ferring from the Dan River District.
I want to thank all of you for balancing the budget and getting that work done. I do want to make one comment, it's not anything to do with the Board of Supervisors. But there's a lot of people that I don't understand who have a tendency to denigrate some of our county employees because they make money and because of being paid. Nobody works for nothing. Salaries should be competitive. And it doesn't do any good, as far as I'm concerned, to set examples when you're talking about other people's income and livelihood if you don't want to show your own. I worked for years as an executive in the international area. I've been around the county for 20 years. There was a time when I had a problem with some of the salaries in the county. Some were a little excessive. And that was because they were given by certain members of the board, Leeway and Largess. Now that's not happening. We have a management system in place to take care of inequities and that's being addressed. So thank you for putting together a budget that's balanced. And I will cease my rant right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Helms from Blue Ridge District.
Good evening. Thank you all for all you do here. I know it's a tough job and balancing budgets is never easy, so thank you very much for all your hard work to you and all the county employees that have to do it each year. I'm here to talk a little bit about the transient occupancy tax. I'm the vice president at Premlin, so I'm here to speak as a citizen and also on behalf of Premlin. But the transient occupancy tax, it only affects one business type or one industry and that's the lodging industry basically. And it has, you know, the idea and intent of that is to promote tourism. You know, that was put in originally for, you know, so money could go from the lodging industry to promote an area so that you hopefully would get more business back into that lodging industry. And so that, you know, in 2000, I guess it's three or four, I was actually on the Chamber of Commerce at that time board and it was floated to us that, you know, there's not a budget for any tourism promotion in the county. Would the lodging industry be willing to sign on to do a transient occupancy tax? And at that time, Premlin was much smaller and there was, you know, bed and breakfasts and a few hotels and so on, some cabins and stuff in here in the county and, you know, we all agreed upon it. That was okay to try to get it in. At that time, you know, four out of the 5% percent collected or 80% of that tax would be spent on promotion of the county. And, you know, that continued on until just a few years ago and they changed that from 80% of that tax to 60%, with 40% of that going, I guess, into the general fund, which is fine. And, you know, there was a sizable amount there and I think the county was getting promoted reasonably and we appreciate that. The Tourism Advisory Committee does a good job. I think they're trying to get out there and make sure the county is promoted, so we appreciate all they do. But, you know, I guess, you know, my thing with working for Premlin, I see how much is paid and how much money those owners put into this county and put into the reinvesting into the property. And last year alone, you know, Premlin and our guests paid over $1.25 million in county taxes, that being, you know, the transient occupancy tax, real estate taxes, personal property and meals taxes. And in just transient occupancy tax, it was last year $617,515 that we paid in transient occupancy tax from Premlin. And, you know, the owners have invested a lot into this county, have been working for 40 years and we've got a lot of employees that have been there a lot of years, I think 97 have been there more than five years. And last year, peak season, we employed 275 employees. So we, you know, very proud to work for all them, but a lot of them are county residents, not all of them, but a lot of them are. The owners keep, you know, building things and investing into this county, investing in Premlin and we appreciate it. And, you know, but more taxes kind of takes that incentive away. So it's my job to, you know, to go to them and, you know, try to show P and L or, you know, an ROI on each project, are we going to be able to make any money back on it? Where's it going to go? And, you know, I've been working for 40 years and they haven't taken any money back. They've always reinvested back into this property. I've never sent them a check back. So all that money's been reinvested back into this county. And so, you know, I appreciate anything you can do to kind of keep that there. You know, last year, we built a new residence, a six-bedroom residence with swimming pool and game room and all that. And, you know, so the real estate taxes from that will hit this year for the first, I guess, completely for the first time this year and that's $26,461. So that's something you didn't have last year because they were willing to invest in it. So, you know, letting, you know, keeping them or keeping any industry and business wanting to invest in the county is, I think, key. And we just signed a contract a couple of weeks ago to build two more residences. So in a few, couple of years, we'll have more and more real estate taxes, which will more, hopefully more guests coming on property and more of all the various income and then supportive taxes that are going out. Yeah, the owners want to, like I say, want to keep growing and we're looking at other projects. We just completed a challenge course, a ropes course that went online, that will go online in about a month. So that's another added activity that we have at Premlin. We're looking at doing some renovations at our stable saloon area where we can, there's new pickleball courts and some of that stuff and all that gets taxed and added to it. So, you know, they keep growing. They've talked about a new fitness center, you know, restaurant and some pools. It's not, the contract's not signed, but we're hoping that soon that'll be going. But we just have to keep talking about, you know, I have to put that for them and I have to include all these taxes and things that I think into that ROI. So, you know, the less of that is, the better. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Up next, Rachel Martin from the Mayo River District.
You have to bear with me, I wrote this right before I came. So I'm Rachel from the Mayo River District. I'm speaking to oppose the personal property tax hike. I feel like it'll put a further burden on the residents of this county when we all already have a lot of burdens considering inflation. And as some have already stated and we're all aware of, we have a 14% poverty rate in this county with a median household income of $50,938. Now, this was from the 2023 census, so then they have changed some. But again, that is household, not an individual. You know, I've heard some say that the personal property tax increase would only affect the higher income families versus lower income. However, I have to disagree because just because you have a lower income, doesn't mean that you don't have to go out and buy a new car or a newer vehicle for that matter. A lot of people here are elderly and they can't have a car that needs maintenance on it every month or they're not able to work on those vehicles. So to say that just because you are lower income, that it's not going to be a burden on you is not a fact, it's fiction. And I have worked in this community at home health and seen a lot of the poverty. I also volunteer at the food bank to do the, with one of the pet programs, they hand out food and there are a lot of people there that come through there and that need that food and they need the food for their pets. That's about all I have to say, is that I just think that y'all should really rethink this and find money somewhere else. Because what are we telling people here that at some point we're just going to be a county for the wealthy and they need upper middle class? Because there are very few jobs here. Most of us commute for work. I do. It was hard for me to get here today, put a lot of miles on my car. Most of the time, my car is valued at way more than what it's worth because both of my cars have $125,000 and I think my other car is $190,000. And I do not get a car to drive even though I travel for my job. So I ask that you all consider not raising that, find me the money somewhere else. Thank y'all.
Mr. AG.
Chairman, may I be added to that list?
Okay. You are Vance AG from what district?
Blue Ridge.
Blue Ridge.
Glad you made it, Vance. That's a long list tonight. Thank you. I'm Vance AG, Blue Ridge District. I've had the privilege to manage a budget much bigger than this county's budget as I work for the grandson of the 10 as I work for the grandson of the 10th President of the United States, Harrison Randolph Tyler. One thing that I would like to bring to focus is inflation. If my facts are correct, and you can check behind me, for the last five and a half years, the citizens and anybody else in this room has had to endure 30-plus percent inflation on everything we have bought from five and a half years previous. What I think is also paltry is the salary you guys get paid, and it's not an annual COL, cost of living. If I'm not mistaken, in the last five and a half years, because it's been approved and voted on to keep the largest line item in this county payroll to give a cost of living increase. Have we missed a year? Mm-mm. How about PPP? Those of us, including the county employees, where the money was available and approved, the PPP monies was to keep people employed. I don't think the county employees of any statute missed any payroll and got a PPP bump on top of the monies that was received. I would therefore contend that the largest line item that a pass for 12 months that this county has endured for the last five and a half years be zeroed in order to balance the budget. And then we'll take another look at next year's funding for the budget. Thank you.
With that, I will close the public comment period. Any discussion from anyone on the board? Any motions? No, I'm talking about anything that we may want to... Yeah, go on. No, I know we can't vote on our budget tonight. Okay. With that, then we will go on to new business. And I have found that we have no new business. Is that correct? With that, we will go on to our old business, budget discussions. So, any conversation on the board about the budget at this point?
I'd just like to hear the input from the board on the various scenarios that were sent over to you. See what everybody wants.
I apologize, Mr. Marshall. I'm looking to pull that up right now.
Leave with FY '26 budget scenarios.
Do you have a date on it?
I have a, I'm sorry.
You have a part topic.
23rd.
Okay. That's the next one on my list.
So, Ms. Sims, I appreciate you sending this out with, and again, we're just in discussions here. No decisions have been made. And we appreciate the input because that's what influences the discussions. So, and thank you for the scenarios here because that kind of helps put dollars and cents to it. Looking ahead as with the property reassessments, of course, something's going to have to give there, specifically the rate to match the the property values to balance all that out. And where it goes from there, I do feel that increasing the personal property tax as everybody in the county does an own real estate. And that would get more people feeding into it. You know, looking at Mr. Marshall's proposal, if we were just looking at paper and spreadsheets, I'm 100% for it. However, as we heard tonight, we're not looking at spreadsheets and widgets and gadgets. We're looking at people. And I think the 16 cents is a little much, well, a lot much. I would be in favor of a 1% to 2% increase or a 2% increase, but not a 16 cent. That's my take.
Okay. I will agree with, I've actually had a few people reach out to me, not a lot. The problem with hitting personal property as hard as what's been brought up is that as much as I would love to be able to pull a cattle trailer up Floyd Mountain with a $2,000 pickup, it's just not going to do it. And coming down, it definitely won't do it at the bottom when I need to stop. So, unfortunately, a lot of our small businesses, whether it's landscaping, when I want to say landscaping, you know, just whether you're mowing yards, whether you're actually, you know, bringing in ton trucks with mulch, whether you're hauling little excavators around. I'm not talking about huge road construction crews. I'm talking about, you know, small businesses. An increase in personal property on that vehicle, it could add up to a lot that could take away from it. I know I talked to a gentleman. He caught me an easy stop the other day, and he said, "I wish I didn't have to have an $80,000 truck." But, you know, basically, the DMV, for me to pull it down the road, I have to have it. So, I understand where that comes from. But like Mr. Perry said over here, not everybody owns real estate in Patrick County either. You know, the personal property is a little more fair across the board, but I still think that we can look at, you know, some other options along the way, whether it's, you know, a much, much smaller increase, whether it's looking at the transient occupancy a little bit. I understand what we heard some from today. But, you know, there are the people that do come here and stay do utilize a lot of our resources as well. Take, for instance, our Parks and Rec. You know, they host tournaments. People come in for that. Hopefully, we can get some bigger ones in there where people are staying more. You know, things like that. You know, I was looking at the list of scenarios that we have, like Mr. Marshall asked us to do. Scenario seven, you know, pulling $197,000 from reserves, you know, to get us through to this year. Not the best way to balance the budget, but it would work to give us some more time, to get some more input on what we need to do in the long-term scope. That's where I'm at on all of these scenarios, you know. We can't compare ourselves to every other county around us. I know one person, I think they're in this room, posted on social media the difference in personal property taxes across the state of Virginia. And we're at $1.71. Well, some of the counties that pay little or no real estate tax are paying near $9 for their personal property tax. So, you know, it's a, it's something we have to look at in the long run. And I think that's something we might have to put off just a little bit longer to figure out exactly what other sources of income that we can come up with. There's my two cents.
Anybody else?
I'll go ahead and put my two cents in, too. You know, taxes are going to be a give and take, no matter what we do, whether that's increased real estate, increased personal property, meals taxes. We're going to get everybody somewhere. And you have to understand, too, that just because other counties and other localities are doing things a certain way, doesn't mean that's what we have to do. You know, the values of vehicles, you know, we've gotten kind of a windfall, for all practical purposes, over the years where personal property values have increased. I know I sold a vehicle a couple of years ago for $2,000 less than what I paid for it 10 years ago. But that's just the way that property, the values of vehicles and stuff like that has gone up exponentially over the last few years. And we may have not changed the tax rate, but that doesn't mean that the citizens are not paying more taxes just because of that inflation. And we've got to figure out a better way than just saying, "Well, we can just raise taxes and plug this hole." We've got to do things other than just raise taxes. That cannot always be the solution because it's not putting us in the right direction at the end of the day. And even when you think about personal property taxes, well, a lot of people don't think that mobile homes are a big part of that, personal property taxes. And some of our poorest residents in the county are living in mobile homes. And also, you can't really say that real estate taxes don't touch everybody in the county because really, they do, even if they're a renter. Well, the landlord is going to raise the rent, whatever amount that is, in order to compensate for it if they want to continue to make the same amount of money on it. So, you can't necessarily sit here and say, "Well, if we raise this, it's not going to affect poor people." Well, that's just not true. And obviously, we don't want to tax, we don't want to tax all of our visitors out of here. And I understand, too, you can compare us to other localities, both in the state and outside of the state. I don't like comparing what we have here in Patrick County to especially places in other states because they have different taxing models to come up with how they fund everything. Some states don't have any property taxes or real estate taxes or personal property taxes at all. But, you know, they may have higher income taxes to compensate for that. So, you have to be careful when you're comparing other localities and keep the comparison strictly to Virginia. But we also have to consider, you know, other factors other than just the rates. Like, for instance, right now, our real estate tax rate, I feel, is artificially inflated because our property values are lower. Well, when we do the reassessments, if property values go up 50%, well, then we're going to be lowering that real estate rate, probably down to 30-some cents per hundred. So, at the end of the day, there's got to be a balance. And we've got to be able to make a decision on what's the best way to fund everything and split it up equally as much as we can between all the revenue sources that we have. But we also have to be physically responsible and cut where we can cut. And that's all I've got to say.
I would like to, I'll fill in my next cent since I've already given you two cents. I think, Mr. Perry, you said it the best tonight so far. You know, it's easy to look at these numbers on the paper. I mean, this is a great sheet of paper, and we got it a week or so ago, I guess. And two weeks? No, maybe more than that. And, you know, numbers are easy to look at. And, you know, as much as I'd love to say, "Well, we could bring in an extra $440,000, all we got to do is bump up these two numbers." But in the end, it's not about numbers. It's about people sitting out here. And that's what you said, Mr. Perry, and that's the hard part. That's really, really the hard part. So, you know, we're trying to do what's best for everybody sitting in here. You know, that's what I said in our invocation tonight, you know. We're looking out for the county and the citizens, and that's what we're trying to do. So, it's going to take a little bit of time. But like I said, Mr. Perry, you said it great tonight when you said numbers are one thing and people are definitely another thing. Any other comments from the board?
I agree. And I don't know, I'm short-spoken, but I don't, I don't think we ought to raise any taxes. We ought to use what we got coming in and cut where we got to cut. That's what the majority... That's what the majority of the people have to do. They can't call Social Security and tell them they need to raise because blah, blah, blah. That's all I got to say on that.
Okay.
My main concern here is understanding and having the board understand that the county and, of course, our budgets also have to respond to inflationary pressures. Eventually, you have to increase your revenue to cover your costs. It has to be done. It will be done. It's like that immovable object that's coming. My concern is where do we get the revenue? Okay, real estate taxes are, just by their nature, they're regressive taxes. Lower-income people pay a larger portion of their yearly income. Even though the number's the same, they pay a larger portion of their yearly income in property taxes, where a wealthier person pays a smaller percentage of their yearly income. So, I just want this board to be cognizant as we go forward to the reassessment that even though the percentages are the same, the harm to lower-income people, and you can scale that up through a decilep, I'll say 10 deciles, just, you know, separate 10 different things on income levels, make sure that as much as you can is coming from a fair, non-regressive tax. That's all I got.
Okay.
I will throw my, I promise this is my last statement on the budget tonight. I promise. There's a term that I was told by some people not too long ago, and y'all have all heard it, the term land rich and dirt poor. Just because your family and you have worked hard and have, you know, a farm, have, you know, some timberland, that's what brings people to our county, I think. You know, people don't come to the Parkway to look at cell towers, things like that. They come here because they want to see our farms. They want to see our our leaves in the fall of the year. And I don't want, I know we're talking about, you know, it's not proportionally fair. But I think we also have to remember, just because you have some property that you may raise a few cattle or cabbage or something on it, also doesn't necessarily equate to a lot of cash in hand to pay for some of this. Anyway, no other comments? Any other old business? Any other action that needs to be taken tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to move the discussion of conduct of a supervisor on the agenda to now.
In half a second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to move conduct of a supervisor to now after old business. Any discussion?
I think the conduct, isn't that something that, so, there's what we can take action on and what we can't. And if there's some misconduct that's not along the lines of setting up here versus issues in the community, does it not go back to the community to take action to file the complaint, get the report, to file the complaint, get the names and get it into the court to have that individual removed versus something that we would take action on?
I believe if that's coming from an individual, you know, in the public, it would. I think this is more directed from supervisor or supervisors instead of the general public. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Abstain.
Mr. Kendrick?
Ah.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Overby?
Ah.
And I vote aye as well.
Yeah, you go ahead and discuss.
So, I'm introducing a resolution to censor Supervisor Steve Marshall. We've had several people come in front of this board to exercise their concerns and complaints over the conduct of Mr. Marshall. We were presented with a package of information at the last meeting
Um, we were presented with a package of information at the last meeting, um, that outlined the conduct that's been accomplished by Mr. Marshall. And I have created a resolution of public censure that has gone through the county attorney for approval. You want me to go ahead and just read the whole thing or?
Sure.
All right. Whereas the Patrick County Board of Supervisors expresses their displeasure with the consistent display of unprofessional behavior by Board of Supervisors member Steve Marshall by his repeated attempts to silence, harass, intimidate, bully, threaten and defame other members of the Board of Supervisors as well as appointed members of the Board's committees, commissions and authorities and citizens of Patrick County. Whereas the Board of Supervisors member Steve Marshall operates multiple social media accounts and/or websites with the intent to silence, harass, intimidate, bully and defame members of the Board of Supervisors as well as appointed members of the Board's committees, commissions and authorities and citizens of Patrick County. And whereas the Board of Supervisors member Steve Marshall has publicly made defamatory statements against members of the Board of Supervisors as well as appointed members of the Board's committees, commissions and authorities and citizens of Patrick County in public meetings of the Board of Supervisors and on social media accounts and/or websites operated by Supervisor Marshall. And whereas the Board of Supervisors member Steve Marshall has continuously committed acts to restrict free speech of the citizens of Patrick County by blocking citizens from his official social media accounts, blocking comments on his posts on social media and deleting his own as well as citizens' comments on social media. And whereas Board of Supervisors member Steve Marshall has attempted to silence, harass, intimidate, bully, threaten and defame other members of the Board of Supervisors through email communications and serving members of the Board of Supervisors and Patrick County with a notice of claim and intent to bring civil and/or criminal action against the Board of Supervisors and Patrick County. The Board of Supervisor seeks to formally express its disapproval of Board Supervisor's member Steve Marshall's continued unprofessional behavior, abuse of power and disdain for the citizens of Patrick County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Patrick County Board of Supervisors that the Board of Supervisors formally censures Board Supervisor's member Steve Marshall for his continued unprofessional behavior, censorship of the citizens of Patrick County and attempts to silence, harass, intimidate, bully, threaten and defame of other members of the Board of Supervisors as well as appointed members of the Board's committees, commissions and authorities and citizens of Patrick County. Be it further resolved by the Patrick County Board of Supervisors that the Board of Supervisors hereby revokes Board Supervisor's member Steve Marshall's appointments to the Department of Social Services Board, Community Policy and Management Team as county, town and county liaison and prohibits Supervisor Marshall for being appointed to any board or county's committees, commissions and authorities for a term of no less than one year effective as of the date of this resolution of public censure. I make a motion to approve the resolution as drafted.
Okay. We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
A motion and a second, discussion.
I still feel he has a right to his thoughts, feelings, beliefs and opinions and if he's violated above and beyond the public trust and violated any, um, for lack of better terms, laws or legal issues, then it's the citizens to get the, to file a complaint with the court, get the, the names and move forward to have him removed. I just feel like this is outside of, I think the citizens electing him and the citizens, if it's, if it's crossed this line, then they should seek the court to have him removed.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Mr. Marshall?
Abstain.
Mr. Kendrick?
Uh.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Overby?
Uh.
And I vote aye as well. Any other old business?
Oh, I have a statement to make.
Okay.
Understand that censure, these things, that's free speech, it's meaningless. Absolutely meaningless. What, what's trying to be done here is silence what I'm saying online, which is exposing things that this board does. Okay? Other than that, that's our right to censure and that's pretty much all I have to say. You can censure every meeting.
Okay. So no other old business, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Got a motion, a second?
A second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall? Mr. Kendrick?
Uh.
Mr. Perry?
Uh.
Mr. Overby?
Uh.
And I vote aye as well.